Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. Meetings can now be viewed live on the City Channel and live streamed on YouTube. Our first order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers at the Rules of Council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. When your name is called, please again provide your name and community for the record. And our first speaker is Ikuhana Hau Makina.
Greetings. Can I be heard? Okay, wonderful. Grand rising. My title is Ikuhana Hau Makina. I am the Grand Inca of the Airqua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. And on this day, I would like to speak about gentrification, as it was the subject of last week. Ricky Burgess decided to say that someone or some people have a disconnectful view about gentrification. So I just want to read the definition of gentrification onto the record. Gentrification is the process whereby the character of a poor urban area is changed by wealthier people moving in, improving housing, and attracting new businesses, typically displacing current inhabitants in the process. And if the, if you look at East Liberty alone, since you only feel that Lawrenceville was the only neighborhood within the confines of the city of Pittsburgh was gentrified, boy, are you wrong. Gentrification is all up and down the corridors of Penn Avenue, specifically in East Liberty. New businesses everywhere. The old existing businesses were priced out of the area. And if that isn't gentrification, then I do not know what gentrification is. It is sad for you to speak upon that as if it did not happen to the city residents. Children who are minor children who are looking to get out into the world are unable to live in neighborhoods that they grew up in, neighborhoods that they only know. The prices pricing people out of their neighborhoods to just live, let alone the businesses that were brought upon by people who never grew up in the city of Pittsburgh. You have people from New York developing all over the city. You have the influence of outsiders developing our city. People over profit must be the mindset of City Council. We had the ability to support the businesses that were existing in our city, and we didn't. We failed. You failed. You failed the residents. You failed the business owners that were already attempting to thrive and survive by pricing them out. I've watched them. I know a lot of them. And they're not there anymore because they were priced out. And what moved in? A new fancier structure, a new fancier, wealthier business, selling cookies at an astronomical rate. Price, priced out. Perhaps some of you need to look at some of the before and after photos of some of these neighborhoods, because it's not the same. Redlining is still happening.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Kotakee Bay.
Greetings, greetings. How are we today?
We are well, and we can hear you.
Great. I am Kotakee Bay, Inca that requires Confederacy Aboriginal, Aboriginal American People. Today, I want to read a section and make everyone aware of the American Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples. That was adopted at the Third Plenary Session held on June fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, of the States of the American Union. And it's about our forms of social, economic, and property rights. And as Aboriginal Indigenous Peoples of the Americas, which this is our ancestral homeland, we have the right to maintain and strengthen our distinctive spiritual, cultural, and material relationship with our lands, territories, and resources, and to uphold our responsibility to preserve them for ourselves and our future generations, which is becoming increasingly harder and harder to do with all the municipal codes and laws and people not willing to adhere to the Constitution in their oath. Our people have a right to the lands and territories and resources which we have traditionally owned and occupied, or otherwise used or acquired. We also have the right to own, to use, and develop, and control these lands, territories, and resources that we possess by reason of traditional ownership or other traditional occupation or use, as well as those by which we have otherwise acquired. And in doing so, we have a right to make sure that our lands are not being exploited to the point of no return, that is not monetized and commercialized to the point of no return, and then everything dries up and the company leaves and the land is left in shambles. Therefore, states and legislatures, city and the state, shall give legal recognition and protection to our people, our lands, our territories, and our resources. And we must be included in on the conversations to have our thoughts and concerns weighed accordingly. And the recognition should be conducted with due respect to our customs, traditions, and land tenure systems of our people. We have the right to legal recognition in various modalities and forms of property possession, ownership of our lands, territories, and resources. And we will always endeavor to work with the state and local municipalities and relevant with relevant international instruments. And states must establish special regimes appropriate for such recognition for their effective demarcation or titling. So with that being said, as Aboriginal People of the Americas, we are here, and we are willing to work with City Council members to make sure everyone is in compliance with the Constitution and to make sure we can move forward on our government-to-government relationship so we can have a-
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shaman Poma.
Greetings, greetings. I am Shaman Poma Chakmamya Holahi of the Airqua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. Pardon me. International laws on the rights of indigenous people that speaks clearly and firmly on gender equality as it relates to Aboriginal indigenous women. We have the right to the recognition, protection, and enjoyment of all human rights and fundamental freedoms provided in for international law, free from discrimination of any kind. States recognize that violence against our women, and in, and our women in particular, hinders and nullifies the enjoyment of all human rights and all of our rights as the matriarchs of our nation. States, which is including the city of Pittsburgh, shall adopt, in conjunction with our people, the necessary measures to prevent and eradicate all forms of violence and discrimination, particularly against Aboriginal indigenous women and our children, and the rejection of assimilation of our women. We have a right to maintain, express, and freely develop our own cultural identity in all respects, free from any external attempt at assimilation. Also, states shall not carry, which includes the city of Pittsburgh, shall not carry out, adopt, support, or favor any policy of assimilation of our women, our people, our children, or for the destruction of our culture. In addition to that, and not only that, protection against genocide. Our women and our children, our people, have a right to not be object of any form of genocide or attempts to exterminate us. And there are guarantees against racism, racial discrimination, xenophobia, and related intolerances. Our peoples have a right to exist in our own culture and our own way of living and governing ourselves. And this must be respected. As you respected the movement to help eradicate black women from miscarriages, you must also stand up for the Aboriginal indigenous women and our children from these egregious acts of assimilation and genocide. The time is now. Do the right thing, City Council. I yield.
Thank you. That takes us on to our Standing Committee agenda. Would a clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith. Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. We have one deferred paper, Bill thirteen fifty-one.
Bill thirteen fifty-one resolution, amending resolution three forty-three of two thousand and twenty, which authorized the mayor and city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Campbell Durant PC for Professional Legal Services and Expert Advice Regarding Labor Matters by increasing the total spend by fifty thousand dollars for a new not-to-exceed amount of three hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Our first new paper, Bill thirteen seventy.
Bill thirteen seventy, resolution, amending resolution number five sixty-five, entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Directors of the Department of Finance and Public Works to Execute an Agreement of Sale and All Related Documents Necessary to Effect the Purchase by the City of Fifty-One Sixty-Four Broad Street in the Tenth Ward Block in Lot Number Fifty-L One Eighty-Eight, and to Accept AD for the Property and Further Authorizing the Expenditure of Funds for the Purchase, Closing, and Other Associated Auxiliary Costs Not to Exceed Ten Thousand Dollars, and Further Authorizing Acceptance of That Lot and Dedicating That Lot in an Adjacent City Own Lot Together as the Nelson Mandela Peace Part to Clarify the Cost of the Purchasing Said Property and Other Associated Auxiliary Costs.
To approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill thirteen seventy-three.
Bill thirteen seventy-three, resolution authorizing the mayor, the manager of the Office of Community Health and Safety, and the director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement with Primary Care and MEE Productions for the Purpose of Mini Grants for Community-Based Organization and Trusted Community Identified Leaders to Participate in the Allegheny County Health Department and the Department of Human Services COVID-nineteen Awareness Campaign for Ethnic and Minority Communities in an Amount Not to Exceed One Hundred Thousand Dollars, Chargeable to Impaleable from the Stop the Violence Trust Fund.
Motion to approve. Just a couple quick questions.
Second.
Mr. Chair, do I, can I, or should I defer? I'm happy to.
It may be worth deferring to Reverend Burgess to begin.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Thank you.
So, if you would indulge me for just a minute before I talk about this, I can give you just a short story. My older brother is my heber. Those who have met my brother know how much he looks like me, or I look like him, right? He's older than me, and I spent most of my life trying to be him in mannerisms, and we sound just alike, we look just alike. My brother has hundred, underlying health conditions now. He's in kidney failure and so on dialysis. He has problems with his heart. And a few weeks ago, he was found in his home, you know, by his, his wife, his son, unresponsive, semi-conscious. He's been in the hospital ever since, first intensive care unit, now still in the hospital for last, I guess, two, three, two and a half weeks or so, and had COVID, and has been, you know, is getting better. My brother's getting better. But they, the doctor said that if he hadn't had the first COVID shot, he probably would not have survived it. The COVID made him, just no pain, just, you know, went into almost a coma-like state. My brother, of course, was reluctant. His wife's a nurse, my wife's a nurse. He was reluctant to take the shot. But, you know, we talked him into it, and he did, and it saved his life. And I share that. I usually don't share that. My brother's private, probably wouldn't want me to share that about him. But there is this, in the Black community, unfortunately, there is this resistance to take the shot and, and to take vaccination, to take the vaccines. When I travel to high-rises, they're not social distancing, they're not wearing masks, and although Lavelle, customer Lavelle can share with you in our communities, they're still having massive parties on the weekends in various communities, various Black communities. They're, they're having parties and showers and unmasked and drinking and socializing as if there was no COVID. So, the county has hired MEE Production to begin a public relations, a stressing to take the vaccine, to social distance, to wear masks, specifically aimed for Black people in the county. It's a two-part, and I can, if you want me to, in fact, I will, I can send you the, the campaign. It has two parts. One part is, there'll be PSAs and bus pictures and telling people to take the vaccine and to act healthy. But then there's a second part, which is of a peer mentorship program. And that is, they are going to recruit peer leaders in the Black community to be health educators and to, you know, to be trusted people in the community pastors, community leaders, to teach others to act responsibly. And so, what this fund does is it, Alma Ilria and MEE Productions, who is doing, who is the county's consultant, Primary Care is the largest health center in minority communities in the city of Pittsburgh. They will give these mini-grants out to community-based organizations and to trusted individuals who volunteer to be mentored, to take the, it's a, it's an online program, like class that you, that you take, that then allows you to be a peer mentor, to send the message of taking the vaccine, social distancing, and being healthy. And so, the city money is, is, is taken from the Stop the Violence Trust Fund, that's, that's supposed to be given to community-based groups anyway, and this will be given out. Our Primary Care and, and MEE Productions will simply be the conduit in terms of giving these monies out to community-based organizations and trusted individuals. And so, I think that you would see, you know, two or three people from various community groups around, around our city, whether it's, you know, Hill District, or, you know, Hilltop City. See, all of these different organizations would have people I, who hopefully would go through this and across the city, become this trusted, these trusted voices with ammunition and education to tell people, because there's still this distrust between African Americans. And unfortunately, the, this, this newest thing about the, about the recent vaccine has just, you know, exasperated that fear. So, I am willing, you know, we can hold it. I can bring the, 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 the county's contractors in next week if we want to have a more foursome conversation. Laura Drogowski will actually administer this grant and work out the details. It won't be me, it'll be the administration. But I do have their support, along with customer Lavelle now, who's at this conversation. And so, I'm willing to, to follow every path. And I'm willing to send out the, if you want to see a preview of the county's advertising plan, I can send that off through email. So, whatever the members want, and I hopefully can gain your support.
Councilman Kraus, may I add one thing to that?
Sure. Yeah, thank you.
Only other thing I would add is that this is also a longer-term play. The, what COVID-nineteen proved was it just exasperated the sort of health disparities that were already existed. And so, part of the training for these sort of community health deputies would be also to talk about, once we sort of come out of COVID-nineteen, we still have higher rates of diabetes. We still have all these other health issues that are plaguing our community, and how do we start, and how do we deal with those as well? So, this is also concerned about the long-term health of our community. So, I just wanted to add that one piece. But Councilman Kraus, do you still-
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. So, I am not interested in holding this. I would like very much to see this move ahead. I'm not sure who Primary Care and MEE Productions is, so it would be helpful, Councilman, if you would just distribute just a, whatever, you know, resume, something along those lines, so that I could familiarize myself with this. One of the reasons that I got muted at yesterday's meeting was that we were actually in a really noisy location. We were doing some location scouting with UPMC in both Bells, Hoover, and Knoxville to look for off-site COVID vaccination sites, and which were, both were very successful, and we're, we're pleased to share that they'll move forward. But there, and what I am finding is that there is a clear desire to take vaccine, but there is a small percentage of people that still are somewhat leery about, about taking vaccines. So, actually, I think this is a good idea. I would like to know, though, if either of you can share with me, and it doesn't have to be here, it can be, you know, after the meeting, but I'd like to know how the Bells Hoover Consensus Group and Knoxville Community Council can actually, because they're both recognized registered community organizations, and I'd like to be able to share with them the application process to access these funds. So, those are my comments, and I'm happy to support. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. And we can-
I'll be added as a sponsor, to be honest with you.
Okay, will do. Any other members for discussion? Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for, for sharing what this program is about. It sounds incredibly important, and it reminds me of a conversation I had with Laura Drogowski not too long ago, during which she was talking about a similar type of program that would allow for community ambassadors to be trained through the Office of Community Health and Safety. That wasn't COVID-specific, and it wasn't kind of physical health-specific. It was more about, this could be a trusted source for you to call, instead of calling nine-one-one before it reaches the urgency of nine-one-one. So, that could be in health issues, but it could be around a, an argument that's happening in a household or that sort of thing. This person would be trained at, you know, at a certain level to mediate, to respond to non-emergencies in the neighborhood in an effort to reduce nine-one-one calls. And I guess, I'm wondering if, if what you know of this program, if this will sort of then take the same people and then continue with those same leaders in the neighborhoods and train them further on other skills to allow them to, to be part of this other program that I heard of, if you happen to know that. It's, it sounds like it's a little bit different from what I, what Laura had described to me, but they all, they both sound equally important. I just didn't know how they sort of meshed together.
Well, if I can, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Laura will lead both of this, so it will be her job to kind of put them together so that it was a continual, a continual. Once we have a database of interested parties to go, who, who have went through already a successful training, it becomes easier now to give them the next training, the next training, the next training, and, and in my mind, and we can do it incrementally. And so, I think that we start with this, but it does not mean, you know, you know, like teachers, you know, a teacher has to have, even though they, they get their certification in teaching, they have to have all these ongoing hours, same thing with nurses, to keep their license. So, in my mind, you would have these community leaders who step up and say, we want to be a community voice, and which we're willing to be trained, and then you continue to train them, you know, in, in domestic abuse, or you continue to train them in, in homelessness, or all this variety of things, because, you know, I was reading, I've, I've been reading a lot lately, and again, and, you know, I've been reading the book, Why, you know, what, They Can't Kill Us All, about the uprisings and Ferguson and, and, and the shootings across the country. And, and one of the things that is clear is there's a disconnect between community and the structure of government, not just policing, but the structure of government, right? We hear it in public comment. We have to figure out a way to get community leaders to address these issues before they get to the, as you're right, you know, I'm preaching to the choir, Erica, but how do we find, how do we, how do we deal with the systemic issues of poverty and homelessness and, and lack of it, you know, corporate, how do we deal with these issues, lack of education, in a way before they become hostile, antisocial, angry, and then, and, you know, bubble up and with the counter of policing and, and the justice system? So, yes, this is a first step to that program, but Laura will be coordinating it, so I think it will be up to her to now make it last long, to, to, to expand it.
Thank you. Really important program. I mean, I just really do believe that this can be, you know, if it's, if it grows, and if the city succeeds in continuing to recruit people, so that as the first cohort of leaders, you know, maybe want to stop after five or ten years, there's a new cohort always coming in. Really, really great program. That, it sounds promising, and I'm happy to support in any way I can.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson, does he, yeah, Councilman?
Thank you, Chair. So, yes, I, I agree. This is a critical, this, this resolution and what it's going to do. I did have a question just about the, the county program. And, you know, as far as I read this, it looks like we're, we're adding to the, to what's already existing or what they're planning to do. And I was wondering what, you know, what the amount they're spending on the whole program.
Mr. Chair, if I can have an interrogative? I, it's over, I don't know the exact contract amount. It's in the three to four hundred thousand dollar range, some number like that. What we're doing simply is, one of the things, to be honest with you, Bobby, is that we found in the Black community, and, and it's funny, I, for a variety of reasons, I've been talking about volunteering and how the differences is, right? It's very difficult, unfortunately, in Black communities sometimes to get volunteers. And so, by giving away these little stipends, we think we can, you know, tremendously encourage people to participate in the program. And, and which is one of the, we think, the gaps of, of the program. In fact, that's what they told us the gaps were, is, and so, it'll be a small amount. And I think it's going to be broken, I mean, Laura will, will, will work out the details, but I think it'll be probably, at the end of the day, I think it'll be two pots of grants. I think one will be to organizations, like the organizations that Mr. Kraus was talking about, that they would, you know, that have large groups of people across our city that would, you know, community-based organizations that have, you know, paid employees that do community organizing. I think they will be, you know, some of the trainees, and then they'll have, you know, pastors and sort of local people who are not necessarily part of a community-based organization, where her also viewed as trusted, trusted leaders and who self-identify. So, hopefully that answered the question.
Yeah, I appreciate that answer. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? If not, Madam Clerk, just want to make sure we took note that Councilman Kraus wanted to be added as a co-sponsor.
No, neither.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Bill is recommended. Thank you. That takes us to our invoices. Need a motion to approve the invoices?
To move?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. That will take us to our P. Any opposed? Invoices are approved. That will take us to our P cards. Need a motion to approve the P cards?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. That takes us to Public Safety Services Committee chaired by Mr. O'Connor, one deferred paper, Bill 1087.
Bill 1087, ordinance supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title I Administrative Article III Organization Chapter 116. Department of Public Safety to add a new subsection 11617 prohibition on the execution of no knock warrants by requiring all city police officers when executing any warrant to physically knock and announce the presence of police before entering a premise.
Motion to hold two weeks.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It will be held two weeks. That takes us to our Public Works Committee chaired by Mr. Coghill. Uh, first new papers, Bill 1365.
Bill 1365, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Execute Relevant Agreements to Receive Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Multi-Module Transportation Program for the Design and Construction of Street and Sidewalk Infrastructure and Pedestrian Plaza Space at and near the intersection of Beachview Avenue and Broadway Avenue and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $600,000.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 1366.
Bill 1366, Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number 830 of 2018. Amended by Resolution 142, Originally Entitled Resolution Providing for an Agreement Allowing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement to complete engineering design for a new multi-modular connection of Hazelwood, Greenfield, and Four Mile Run with Oakland, which will support green infrastructure, ensure safe travel, increase travel options between these neighborhoods, protect local neighborhoods, and increase connectivity consistent with the concept design developed through the 2018 public process and further providing for payment of cost not to exceed $1,346,644 and 10 cents to offer, to authorize a supplemental agreement with Michael Baker for an increase in the scope of work on the Mon Oakland Mobility Corridor Project and to account for the new increased project costs not to exceed $2,031,904 and 81 cents and increase of $396,230, $223 and 31 cents from the previous supplement.
A motion for a brief discussion, Mr. Chair.
Second.
I'll defer to Councilman O'Connor. I think, uh, that's why he's appearing, right?
Yeah, probably. Thanks. Um, so I think the director is on there. Um, there's two parts to this. Um, so first, the title of it, I obviously don't like and I don't think the neighborhood likes, but this is part of an extended agreement with Michael Baker, um, who's the lead engineer, um, with PWSA as well. So there's a stormwater piece that is supported. Um, the second piece, because council reallocated money, we reallocated about 1.2 million out of the original four for bike and pedestrian only trails through Sylvan Avenue, which is part of the Greenway. It's actually, used to be an old road. It'll be a nice connection um, for bike and pedestrian, uh, only. And that's the only money that we have for Sylvan Trail. Um, there needs to be a geotech study on that hillside because it's been vacant for so many years. So it's, it's a two-parter from what I gather, and I just need the, the director to confirm that, that this money goes to the geotech on Sylvan to make sure it's stable. And then the second piece, if you could just explain briefly the stormwater, because I know we're working with PWSA on that. Um, those would be my only questions. So I, I assume somebody's there.
Yeah. Hi, uh, this is Karen Rex from the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. That's right. This, um, uh, supplement is to complete, uh, additional geotechnical evaluation of Sylvan. It's a complex hillside um, and requires, uh, has been closed for about 30 years at this point. So um, we're needing to do additional exploration to make sure that that is stable um, and that we're able to reopen that per the community plan, um, as, uh, the Sylvan Connector. Uh, and then the other piece of this is to, um, uh, complete work, uh, associated with the permit for the stormwater um, implementation that PWSA is leading. So Michael Baker actually aided PWSA um, under our contract for their work, uh, in this.
Okay, tho- those are my questions. And I just wanted some, some clarity because again, whenever everybody sees the original legislation, it's based on one from a couple of years ago. We're extending it. So when people see connector, and I saw it too, I was like, wait, 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 we're, we have other discussions on that. So this is just clarifying so that we understand that the only money we have on Sylvan right now was what council did for the trail and the bike. So thank you. And those are my only questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from members? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 1367.
Bill 1367, Ordinance Extinguishing an Easement in 20-Foot Strip of Real Property Adjacent to the Easterly Side of 21st Street, 60 Feet in Width Between Smallman and Railroad in the Second Ward of the City.
A motion for a brief discussion, Mr. Chair.
Need a second?
Second.
Second.
You two approve with discussion, yep.
I believe Councilwoman Gross, this is her district and she might have a question or two. So I will defer to her.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, yeah, I just don't have details on where the easement is and kind of, uh, it says extinguishing an easement. So I'm assuming that we had granted a private owner access to public property and now it's being extinguished, but, um, I just appreciate some conversation about it. Do we have, um, the director still here?
Yeah.
Thank you. Hi, Director.
Um, so, uh, Comms Person Gross, uh, this is a area down by Railroad Avenue, which, uh, is a, is a very complex area of the city in which, um, due to its past industrial, um, use, there are, um, all kinds of sort of strange remnants um, that exist in that area. Um, this one actually, uh, took a little bit of understanding. It is not technically right-of-way. It's a, it's a, it is private property. It remains as property, um, but it is a utility easement, um, that is residual from, uh, some past era of this. So it's, this is not a street right-of-way per se, um, but it is in this committee because of the utility, previous utility use of this easement. But it is not, we've gotten approval from PWSA, um, from the Department of Public Works and from DOMI, um, that there is no public purpose for this residual easement that we have. So we're just trying to clean up the records.
Interesting. I mean, I don't see a map attached. And so I've got, you know, parcel numbers. Um, and so that's really hard to understand. Um, we know that there is not enough, um, pedestrian, in fact, there's zero pedestrian infrastructure right here, right? There's a sidewalk on the River Parcel side of Railroad at 21st. There's a little bit of sidewalk in the new construction, which is mostly loading zone and kind of garbage dumpster area on one side of 21st by the river. And so, but then there's like no man, like no safe land, I should say, right? Between Railroad and Smallman. Um, I can't think, there's no sidewalk at all anywhere. So I'm just trying to see like exactly where we're talking about.
Right. This is not, as I said, this is on a parcel. This is a utility easement. So this is not a surface. Um, so we would not be able to, for example, create, uh, there is not a sidewalk. There's not a pedestrian way. This is a utility easement. Um, that is residual. So it's subsurface.
Subsurface. I got it. I would still like to know kind of on a map which parcel we're talking about. Um, all, you know, all of our minds don't work in parcel numbers. So it's hard to know exactly where this is. Would you mind if we just kind of, um, yeah, I ha- um, held it for a week so we could figure out kind of what is going on here? Um, and I think everybody would just, then, then there's no questions. I, I personally have been talking with strip district neighbors and about 10 different developers about the underground utility problems that they're experiencing, especially from 21st up to 31st on Smallman. Um, and we're intending to have some public conversations about how when they approached the, all of the utilities, there's massive confusion, confusion about uh, who's privately responsible, who's publicly responsible. And I think it's a public conversation because I, I feel like it's costing the taxpayer actually more money because things get fixed and then replaced and then something else breaks and the different utility gets fixed and replaced. Um, and I would just hate to lose an opportunity that might be needed. While I understand that each individual utility you've said has, um, decided that that little portion is okay. What has been lacking is a real kind of combined conversation. So if you wouldn't mind indulging me, I'd like to hold this. It doesn't seem to be urgent at all. Um, and then we can at least circle the wagons a little bit. I'd appreciate it. So.
Did you say one week?
Just to hold just a week would be helpful.
Motion to hold for one week.
Second.
Question? And all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? It will be held one week. That takes us to our, uh, let the record reflect, uh, we've been joined by Council President Smith. That moves us to our Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilman Kraus, one supplemental paper, Bill 1382.
Bill 1382, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an amended lease agreement with Wood Street Commons Commercial LLC to continue lease, to continue leasing office space in 304 Wood Street for the Pittsburgh Partnership for a sum not to exceed $1,359,654 and 82 cents over five years and for the payment of the cost zero.
Motion to approve, very brief discussion.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmen. Uh, we have, uh, Senior HR Manager Deidre Cochrane on the line. If, uh, she would like to, um, just give us a brief explanation of the bill?
Hi, um, this is Deidra. Uh, uh, good morning. Uh, we, the Pittsburgh Partnership is located at 304 Wood Street and we, um, have been there since 2013. Uh, we started with one floor, um, on the third floor, and now we have two floors, which is, um, the third floor and the fifth floor. And we, um, just want to continue leasing the office space. Um, and we like to be in that space because we're located, we need to be co-located, co-located with the PA Career Link.
Okay. Uh, and so this is just an extension of an existing lease and this will extend it for five more years?
Yes, sir.
And the total cost then is the 1359?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks very much. I'm good with it. If other members have questions, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members for discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That moves us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson, uh, one deferred paper, Bill 1231.
Bill 1231, Resolution Approving a Conditional Use Application in the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoned Article Five, Chapter 911 to Lukovich Center Inc., Property Owner for Authorization to Operate a Multi-Suite Residential Use at 2142 Wright Main Street Block in Lot 87D58 Zone RMM Multi-Unit Residential Moderate Decency District 14, Council Ward 14, Council District 5.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
Uh, Chair, I defer to, um, uh, Councilwoman if she wishes to, um, talk about this at all.
Uh, I, I believe that's the one we held yesterday. I'm fully supportive.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilman Gross, one new paper, Bill 1368.
Bill 1368, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Thor Facilities Plan for Proposed Land Development Located at the Corner of Harrian Avenue and Ruthven Street, Including Those Parcels Identified on the Attached Exhibit B Located in Pittsburgh.
Motion to hold four weeks.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any, any, any opposed? It will be held four weeks, you said, correct?
That's right.
Okay, thank you. That ends our agenda for today. Uh, we do have some, a number of meeting announcements. Um, this afternoon at 1:30 PM, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 1339 as it relates to a petition to move money from the military budget and to invest in social programs and human needs. To register to speak, please fill out the signup form on council meeting webpage by 11:30 AM Wednesday morning. You may also register by calling the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138 by the registration deadlines. Next week, council will hold our regular and standing committee meetings on Tuesday and Wednesday, April 20th and 21st at 10 AM. Also next week, council will host a cablecast public hearing on Wednesday, April 21st at 1:30 PM on Bill 1085 as it relates to zoning changes that will require rear or side access to off-street parking spaces for single-family attached dwellings. You can register to speak at next week's meetings and hearings by filling out the signup form on council meeting schedule webpage by 9 AM Tuesday and Wednesday mornings for the meetings and by 11:30 AM Wednesday morning for the public hearing. You may also register to speak by calling the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Is there any announcements from members? Seeing none, need a motion to, uh, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned.
Thanks, sir.